You as well.
I call to order this meeting of the Salem City Council for Monday, April 15th, 2024. And tonight we are having a work session on options for allocation of opioid settlement funds. If the recorder will please call the roll.
Counselor Stapleton?
I'm here.
Counselor Nusyoka?
Here.
Counselor Phillips?
Here.
Counselor Gwynn? Counselor Gonzalez? Counselor Hoy? Counselor Nordike?
Here.
And Counselor Varney?
Here.
Mayor Hoy?
Here. And I know we have two other counselors who are in the building somewhere that'll be here soon.
Okay.
Gwynn and Hoy will be here soon.
Okay.
All right, will you join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Counselor Stapleton, approval of the special meeting agenda?
Thank you, I move approval of the special meeting agenda.
Second.
Motion by Stapleton, second by Phillips. Any discussion?
No.
Will the recorder please call the roll?
Counselor Stapleton?
Aye.
Counselor Nusyoka?
Aye.
Counselor Phillips?
Aye.
Counselor Gwynn?
Aye.
Counselor Gonzalez? Counselor Hoy?
Aye.
Counselor Nordike?
Aye.
Counselor Varney?
Aye.
Mayor Hoy?
Aye, motion passes. All right, Counselor, do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda?
We have one revision, so I move revisions to the agenda. Do we need to vote on this, Dan?
Yes.
Yeah, I thought so, okay, I move revisions to the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Stapleton, second by Phillips. Counselor, anything on your motion?
Yeah, just real quick, this is some information from Polk County, which was requested and has really been helpful.
Great. Any further discussion? Will the recorder please call the roll?
Counselor Stapleton?
Aye.
Counselor Nusyoka?
Aye.
Counselor Phillips? Counselor Gwynn?
Aye.
Counselor Gonzalez? Counselor Hoy?
Aye.
Counselor Nordike?
Aye.
Counselor Varney?
Aye.
Mayor Hoy?
Aye, motion passes. All right, so now it is time for discussion for the topic at hand, which is options for allocation of opioid settlement funds. I'm going to go straight to Gretchen Bennett to lead off.
Thank you, everybody, I'm Gretchen Bennett, I'm liaison on homelessness issues and our human rights manager at the city of Salem, and I have just very quick remarks to just help introduce us to the evening, and then I'm going to ask Chief Womack to comment, see if anybody else had anything to add, but then turn it right back to you, Mayor Hoy, in pretty short order for your discussion.
All right.
So attached to the staff report is information about the eligible uses of funds received and anticipated in the opioid settlement dollars. You'll also see as attachments, an idea about a proposed youth and young adult prevention and intervention position, as well as the county use data from Marion and Polk Counties, and we appreciate them getting that to us. Yeah, tonight's an opportunity for us to discuss how to purpose these dollars, and we have city staff and some community partners here if you wish to explore options or have discussion with us. We recommend investing with outreach and our homeless services team, Salem Outreach Team, in northeast Salem and in Wallace Marine Park, but with some flexibility to work citywide for people who are struggling with addiction, who are also experiencing unsheltered homelessness. We recommend investing with our housing authority and our first responders in our facilities. For example, at Salem Housing Authority, there could be resident services coordinators focusing in on the needs of folks in our supportive housing units. Similar strategies can also make a difference in temporary emergency shelter facilities, such as the existing shelter sites like the Navigation Center or other micro shelters or other types of programs. We recommend investing with fire and police in the wellness of our first responders. There's great opportunity here to look at practical tools, counseling, at built environment strategies like lighting that can make a difference in the physical health and the emotional well-being of our first responders who face these difficult situations day in and day out. We recommend stemming the tide. If you look at the data from Marion and Polk Counties and the prevalence of the young adults that are engaging in opioid use, so we'd like to reach the Salem zip codes where there's prevalence with education, outreach, and intervention, and we know there's evidence-based strategies that could help in this area. And we recommend releasing funds to hear what ideas our community members and partners and providers have to see how we can invest. This could be about strengthening existing sites, like for example, at the hospital, ensuring that anyone who arrives at the emergency department is leaving with Narcan to be able to ensure that they have the tools that they need if there's a future overdose. We overall recommend that we support ideas that aren't otherwise eligible for insurance or other funding, so we can be strategic with these dollars, that we prioritize populations that are disproportionately impacted, that we help existing programs and services, recognizing our broader need around sustainability, you know, being conscious of not launching new things that we worry about being able to sustain, and that we allocate with urgency. Anyone who's working on this certainly understands the crisis that's affecting people with substance use disorder. With that, Chief Womack, I'll invite you to comment, and then we'll go from there.
Thank you, Gretchen.
Great, thank you, Gretchen. Trevor Womack, Chief of Police, just briefly in support really of what Gretchen's recommending is, and maybe to expand on it a little bit, many of you are familiar with our two homeless services team officers, HST officers, so a couple of you've gone out and worked with them a little bit actually too, and seen what they do, and I find their work is extremely valuable. It's focused on safety, and we're talking about unmanaged encampment situations primarily, managing and mitigating some of the public safety and public health issues associated with those environments, and helping connect folks to services, kind of in that continuum of care, right, getting them to a micro shelter or into the Navigation Center and moving on to their permanent housing, and we have multiple examples of that actually being successful and occurring, and so I think that work is incredibly valuable. And in talking with the officers and the data that we have, we know that there's a high incidence of opioid use disorder or addiction need in these encampment areas in general, and we started collecting data just since October, and we know that it looks like 62% of the times that they contact folks in an unmanaged camping environment, at least one person there in that group is some sort of addiction issue associated with that. So it's over 60% of the time, and I think the number's higher than that just from the data we've been collecting, that the folks that they encounter in the unmanaged encampments are suffering from addiction. So just to kind of connect the amount of their time and efforts that are associated with folks that are suffering from opioid use disorder, which connects backs to these funds, right? And I'd also like to mention that because of our current budget crisis, that is exactly one of the teams that is potentially being lost less than a year and a half from now, right, if we have to make that tough decision. So I'm always open for new possible ways to either stave off those cuts or expand that team, as we've talked about in the past, and so I just wanted to support the need there and any possible ideas about using this funding to support that resource. And then you also mentioned, Gretchen, the wellness side of both, I'm going to speak a little bit for fire too, Chief, you can help me out here, but obviously our first responders are responding to these situations more and more and more, and overdose deaths in our county, I had the data on the Marion County side, not off the top of my head, but it's been increasing year over year for several years, and our officers are responding more often, using naloxone to save lives more often, and also investigating accidental deaths from overdoses more often. And so there's a certain amount of trauma experience in those type of first responder experiences that we want to acknowledge and recognize that's real, and so as part, anything we can do to help support our wellness network that we have in place now for our officers and our firefighters, for example, there's programming that we have for physical fitness that we can't afford to pay for anymore, it's just like a, it's a computer program that helps you build a physical fitness program and manage your physical fitness, things like that, that are relatively low cost, to higher-end things, like we have a contracted police psychologist that works with us now, but we're not able to provide a dedicated amount of counseling, so some increased or enhanced funding for that contractual relationship could provide more regular opportunities for counseling services for police officers, for example. So I do think there's opportunities both in the operational side with HST potentially, but then also in support of our wellness network for both police and fire. Thank you.
Gretchen, do you have any follow-up?
No, thank you, unless anyone else here wants to add any at this time. Great, thank you.
All right, well, thank you, so now it's, I think, just to throw it open for discussion, but Gretchen, what outcome are you hoping for tonight from us? Just, is it strictly for us to have a discussion? Are you hoping for some direction? What do you, what would you like to be the end?
Discussion and a big picture sense of direction, how the recommendations hit you and then are resonating with you, and then what we can do is come back with a more precise budget proposal.
Great, I think the city manager has a comment on that as well.
Thank you, Gretchen, that was the part that I was looking for, and our intention is to take your feedback this evening and then come back with a specific budget proposal based on the revenue as we understand it.
Thank you. So now it's time to ask questions, have conversation, what are your thoughts on the staff's proposal? Counselor Nordike?
Thank you, good evening, Mr. Mayor and my peers on council, and thank you, Chief Womack, City Manager Staley, and Gretchen Bennett for speaking to that. I appreciate that we're being given an opportunity to weigh in and really talk about direction. I do have a couple of thoughts just right off the bat, and then I'm really looking forward to hearing what my colleagues have to say. First of all, if there's a way that we can preserve city positions, positions that are currently filled right now with this funding and save up general fund dollars for other opportunities, you know, anything we can do to avoid layoffs of existing staff is something that I'm very much interested in, just at a high level. The other comment slash question I have, in looking at staff recommendation, item C includes a coordinator position, and I'm wondering, would this be a new position? Because I do have concerns about using these short-term, one-use dollars to create a new position, so I'd love to hear a little bit more about what staff's recommendation is with regards to this coordinator position.
Thank you, Counselor, so I heard two questions in there, who wants to tackle those?
I can begin with the C of the coordinator position, this is Gretchen Bennett, homelessness liaison. Speaking of Counselor Nordike's point about existing positions, the city's current youth and young adult position is in the city manager's recommended budget to conclude July 1. Much of the concepts around reaching youth and developing strategies that help with refusal skills and that experience can be adapted into this, so this is an adaptation of an existing position with a new focus to hit that first objective that you mentioned. I don't know if I heard a second question, so you'll have to forgive me.
I think it was about preserving existing positions.
Well, thank you.
You kind of answered them both at once, I think?
Thank you.
Yeah, it was about not creating new positions and how to preserve existing positions, is what I, as I recall.
With that prompt, and I'll just add, the work that we're doing, which feels very urgent in certain parts of town in particular, we've talked about specific locations, Counselor Hoy has raised comments in her ward, we've been focusing on Wallace Marine Park, we're doing that with positions that are ending in one fiscal year's time if projections go forward. I know we can't speak for future mayor and council decisions at all, but the homeless services team right now would be a concern in one year's time, and our special projects outreach team with Salem Housing Authority, same thing, and so it's really with that spirit, Counselor Nordike, of what do we understand that's working that we could try to preserve for a bit with dollars, of course with applying the appropriate eligible uses to these functions is what we had in mind.
And I think our city manager has another thought on that, too.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to point out that attachment two in your backup materials provides you with an overview of the projected revenue that we anticipate receiving between now and 2038, and as you can see, at least until 2031, 2032, we were anticipating receiving over $500,000 per year, and we're starting with a little over $2 million in the bank right now, so we, again, we will come back to you with a specific budget recommendation, but we feel like there is some capacity there to bring a program or fund a position going forward without creating an impact on the general fund.
Further discussion? Counselor Phillips?
I just want to thank you, Mayor Hoy, and thank you, City Manager, for those kind of updates and clarifications. I just want to kind of make sure I'm starting from a correct factual position in the documents that we have. So currently, as of now, it looks like we have just over $2 million that we have access to, and it looks like in the documents, that has to be encumbered within five years. So my first question is just, does that mean like committed and planned out, or does encumbered mean spent?
Good evening, Josh Eggleston, Chief Financial Officer. Encumbered means it's committed, so it's part of a grant agreement, it's on a purchase order, something like that, it doesn't have to be actually spent, but it does have to be committed.
And then my follow-up question for that is, I mean, is, what kind of flexibility is there in sense of, it seems more clear to me if we're buying something like a one-time cost, you know, it could be committed and then spent a little bit later, but if you have like a budget with FTEs or like work, operational stuff, how much, like can it be committed one year and then spent the next, or, you know, is it really that five years?
Yeah, I think for operational spending, you would just look at the current year being committed, you wouldn't look at future years necessarily, but given the cash flow constraints that you see there, I don't see that as an issue for at least a single position being considered.
And then my final question kind of loops back to, you know, this is what's the beginning of these funds, so we have 2 million now, and I think the city manager mentioned that we have some expectation of additional funds through at least 2030 or 2038, and is that amount on average expected to be the half million per year?
Thank you, Counselor. Again, going back to exhibit two, we're looking at about $7.1 million in revenues, in payments over between now and the end of 2038. It probably averages out somewhere around $500,000 per year during that period of time.
Thank you for that restatement and clarification. Do we have any sense of like how that's structured to come through, like is it the same time of year every year, or will there be any unpredictability with that?
If I may, I think a worst case, it'll lay out how it is in the attachment toward the end of the fiscal year each year, but like, for example, I just got notification, we just got a wire for the Walmart settlement that's not listed on your attachment because I didn't have that visibility, so we have another $364,000 that we didn't yesterday. So there might be other settlements that decide to pay in a lump sum instead of following the payment schedule, so if anything, it'll be pulled forward, if that makes sense.
Okay. I might defer to my colleagues, but I do have some broad comments. Do you want me to talk about those now or let some other people speak first?
It's up to you, that's fine.
So I guess I have some questions about like, how do we currently get, you know, the product that is the reversal agent naloxone? Is that currently obtained through grant funding, or is there like a cost to a silo of our current budget, like?
This is Gretchen, I can speak to that. Although there's been some modest expense in the past year for that, one of the allocations the state of Oregon is making with their investment that came into the state of Oregon, not for cities, is specifically for kits and naloxone, and they're making those available to eligible entities. So we're interested in learning more about what kind of volume we can access here in Salem, but we may be able to tap the state's fund for product.
Thank you, I mean, that's the kind of stuff I'm looking to hear. I guess the reason why I want to bring it up is because there's a lot of moving parts in this, and I think the science is evolving on how best to deal with this challenging situation, but what I don't think is unknown is the effectiveness and need for the reversal agent naloxone. I think a couple of years ago, I asked the question to our Chief of Police and Chief of the Fire Department, you know, do they have it and are they using it, and like the very next month and for the next few months, I saw dozens of patients in the emergency room who had received one of their initial life-saving doses by, you know, members of those two, you know, city agencies, departments. So the lives saved there is just, it's hard to put a number on and how effective it is. I do just want to take a moment, like, I get a sense that there's a desire for some tough love in this difficult situation of like addiction, and I hear that, and, you know, I think our state has kind of gone in a direction of, you know, returning to the baseline of criminalizing some of this stuff, and I don't know how effective that will be, but, you know, it may encourage people to, you know, choose to pursue, you know, treatment where they wouldn't have otherwise done so. But separate from that, and I get that we're angry and we're frustrated when we see our friends, family members, and community members, you know, dying from this scourge, but like the effectiveness of keeping someone alive with this intervention and giving them the chance to, you know, choose it in future, you know, it takes a lot of, you know, times to be brought back to like eventually choose the right thing. This is not like, you offer them the right path once and it works every time, this is like you got to offer the right path 20 times, 30 times, but eventually, there is significant hope if you run people through the system and give them like, hey, these are your resources, this is what you can do, this is where you can go, and the only way you get to those necessary number of interactions is if you keep somebody alive. So I would just want to prioritize the safe distribution and effective distribution of that reversal agent. You know, in addition to that, I think it's very moving to me to hear of the trauma that our first responders are experiencing, I would be supportive of, you know, increasing funding for counseling services because what we do is stressful and in fact, trauma inducing, and I fully support that. And then finally, I do have a desire to balance this programmatic expense of these funds to give us, you know, financial reimbursement for the work as a city we're already doing. So I like the fact that we're looking at, you know, shoring up funding for the sustainable outreach team, it'll just be kind of interesting to see what those numbers look like when we're, you know, there's no scale tonight, so just kind of seeing a scale, and I mean, I like the idea of a coordinator, I don't know, you know, what that'll look like in future, but I look forward to kind of coming attractions to see like what it could do and how it would be beneficial in moving forward, and I think that pretty much summarizes the stuff I wanted to get on record.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dr. Phillips, can you speak a little bit to naloxone? And I've heard that the drugs as strong as they're coming out now, it takes more than one, and more than two, and more than three sometimes. Is there the possibility of developing a, what do you call that, a tolerance to naloxone?
I appreciate the question from my colleague, if it's okay for the mayor and the rest of my colleagues.
Sure, yeah.
I mean, I appreciate the question and I get it, it probably doesn't work in the way that you're asking the question, but to answer this topic of like, so opiates work by, like the way that they pharmacokinetically work, or what they do to the body, is they're a depressant, you know, they bind the mu receptor and they depress your desire or urge to breathe, so if you have too much of any opiate, you stop breathing, and so what naloxone does is it blocks that, it prevents that from happening, and absolutely, whatever it is that's caused the situation of not breathing enough or not breathing at all, it may require more than one dose and many multiple doses, and that's always been true. I think that what has changed, wouldn't be so much a resistance to naloxone, but the, like I've talked about this before, you know, morphine is a common pain medicine that's used usually through an IV, you know, like four milligrams is like a pretty typical dose of a one-time amount for, you know, treatment of pain, a broken bone or something, they may get more than one dose, so that's milligrams, four milligrams, you know, fentanyl is measured in micrograms, so that's, you know, 1,000, 1,000ths, you know, so 25 micrograms or 50 micrograms is the same as four milligrams, and it's just so much smaller, so, you know, two milligrams of fentanyl would kill multiple people, and it's just the potency, the tiny amount needed would require more, and it's just so widely distributed and so cheap that I think that's what's affected every community, not just Oregon, we're still well below the national averages in terms of patients per population, but that's the increases that we're seeing, it's just that drug is so, such a tiny amount is so dangerous.
Yeah.
Thank you for that. There's a lot to learn, and what it makes me think about is addiction services and treatment, and how we need to get to the root of this problem so that people aren't doing it and needing naloxone like they are. So I'm just curious if there is, and I don't have it all in my head just yet, but what can we do in terms of treatment and detox or those kinds of things? Are we putting any money into, for instance, Brideway? Or can we do anything to help in that regard?
I think the city manager wants to give that a shot, and then we'll go to Gretchen Bennett.
Yeah, I was going to say, basically what Gretchen's going to say, I suspect, but yes, we can do that, and what we're proposing is, we have a balance of $2.1 million, and I suspect when we come back with our budget proposal, now $2.4 million, when we come back with our budget proposal, there will be dollars available to put out into the community to help deal with these specific issues related to addiction treatment and counseling services for entities like Brideway or Arches or, you know, whoever else in the community is working in this space, for them to go through a competitive process and for us to make decisions about how we can best use those dollars.
Thank you.
I could add to that, that you could either, we could either just release grant money and invite partners to tell us what do they see as a key need that's eligible with the eligible uses of the dollars, or we could focus in with particular components of these, those are both choices.
Counselor Gwynn?
So Josh, you said that 364,000 just came in from Walmart, but I don't see Walmart on this list, so is that, did I misunderstand? Was it Walgreens?
No, it was Walmart.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I do apologize if it's not listed below as one that doesn't, that needs further information, but yeah, it's another settlement, and I will say this is an evolving climate, you know, if you'd asked me a year ago, you know, three of these settlements wouldn't have been on the list, so.
So will this amount increase then by that 364,000, or is that included in that 7.1 million?
No, the cash on hand will increase by that 364.
Sweet, thank you.
I think, just to be clear, so what Josh is saying is that there are other corporations and entities out there who are still in litigation, and they could reach some sort of settlement and enter, and then I think it would all be distributed with the same formula that all of these are, and so our portion would be whatever percentage that, so the state gets a percentage and then entities within the state get a percentage, and that'll just continue until this whole process is finished. The number goes up, the only time it goes down is if we spend it, yeah.
Counselor Stapleton?
Thank you so much. I would like to talk about educational funds, prevention, and recovery services, so I don't know who's going to talk about this, but I would love to know about our educational funds, who our partners are, are we partnering with the county, with the school district, and how are we engaging the general public on this topic as well? You might not have a plan, I recognize that, but maybe you could just tell me if there are conversations being had or if there are ideas for those outreach mechanisms.
Counselor Stapleton, Gretchen Bennett, happy to. Back in July, I did what I'd call sort of an informal outreach to a number of community partners who work in this space, Josh with Ideal Options, Carol from Marion County, just to name a couple of examples, I tried to just like talk to people who are working in this space and get some initial reactions on what, like almost an informal gaps analysis, and so I have some notes from back in July that kind of helped inform where we went today, like one of the things that jumped out at me before the youth position that's slated with our budget to conclude- our budget to conclude was, wow, we look like we've got to reach people at a younger age. We've got to do more in that space, for example. And talking about our shelter buildings and the struggles with substance use at the shelter buildings, and can we anchor something stronger there were just examples of things that I remember hearing in that initial outreach. And then after that, we paused to just try to get a sense of where you all were coming from. I've tried to stay up to date, kind of checking in with Marion and Polk Counties about what and how they might see their use to be, and invited folks to come tonight, should they want to come and listen to our work session and be here in case there's questions. And just generally been trying to stay in relationship with, with our Marion and Polk County partners who are also getting opioid settlement money as well. So I, it's not like we've built outreach in detailed levels on any of the concepts. We didn't want to get too far ahead of where you might want to go with your prioritization of the dollars.
Okay, thank you.
I think the city manager wants to win. Counselor, if I could interrupt you, and we'll get back, right, right back to you.
Yeah, just before we move on from that question, Gretchen and I and the police chief met with Marion County a couple of weeks ago, and Ryan mentioned that the county will be getting $13 million in opioid settlement dollars. So we certainly will be working with them to understand how they intend to use those dollars and where they intend to put them. And it may be an opportunity for us to coordinate our efforts and get literally, you know, more impact for the dollars.
And do we know what Polk County's settlement is?
I do not.
I don't know the dollar amount, but I know when I talked with staff, the initial thought there was to focus on kits with things like doses that could be made available out in the field, is how I understood their initial thoughts.
Thank you. Counselor Stapleton, back to you for your.
Yeah, thanks. Yeah, I want to make sure that we are also kind of capitalizing on the school district and their use of, I know they're, they're probably not getting funds, but they do already have programs for education, right? I know my kiddos, when they go through that, they come home with a lot of questions, and it's a great source for us to help educate. It's hard because as a parent, you're not necessarily educated on all of the things that our kiddos might be interacting with or coming in contact with. So, but yeah, trying to capitalize on that as well is what I'm trying to get at. And then as, I don't know who educates the general public on this. I'm guessing it would be Marion County because they're in charge of public health, and this would be a public health concern. I'm assuming they're the ones who do our drunk driving education campaigns, and I'm assuming that this would be something similar. I really hope that they would pursue that as well. And then as far as prevention, I'm wondering, we've spoken a little bit, a lot about our unhoused residents here in Salem, but do we have other at-risk groups that we've identified?
This is Gretchen. The, I think I printed every document except the actual staff report. If you look in the background section of the staff report, it speaks to the populations based on racial or ethnic categories that the Oregon Health Authority has identified as being at higher risk. And so one idea would be to identify culturally specific organizations where we can do specific partnerships. For example, in the youth work that we currently do, we do mini grants with culturally specific organizations to do direct outreach. And the thought in that position would be to continue that, but for a more precise focus on opioid prevention and intervention work.
Okay. You know, we were talking about, Counselor Hoy was talking about, you know, how do we get at the root cause of this? In my lived experience and from the way I approach this, and please correct me if you think that I'm off base here, a lot of this is stemming from trauma that is caused throughout life, but a lot of times in the younger years. And just like any other drug or addiction, it is a way to numb pain. And so I hope that that is taken into consideration when we're working through this. And even though maybe somebody doesn't show up on a demographic sheet here, doesn't mean that, can we look to areas where we know there's trauma? Can we talk to people at Center for Hope and Safety and get some education there, just in case, right? We know that there's a lot of trauma there. Can we do outreach with our LGBTQIA+ youth? We know that that's a really high rate for folks who are either running away from unsafe homes or whatnot, but I want to try and minimize the trauma that these kiddos are going through. So yeah, I want to, I want to think through that, and maybe I can email you any more things that I think of, but you're brilliant, so you'll figure it out. And then I guess just another question that I had was, you know, what do the recovery services look like here in Salem right now? Right? And I guess that's really for any kind of addiction, right? I don't know if you throw them all in the same hat. Is that how we categorize it? I don't know. How are treatment for this addiction different from another addiction? And what does the opportunity look like for people wanting to get those services? I would be really interested to see what kind of disparities we have or where we do, where we're doing really great work and we just need to get, get the word out that that's there for our community members. Those are things I'm thinking about.
So Gretchen, my thoughts on this, I guess as I'm listening to all my colleagues, and I haven't heard anything that I've disagreed with, but I do want to kind of maybe refocus this a little bit because my, my thinking on this is there, the need is so huge in so many spaces in this area. Like, I mean, we could spend 20 times this amount of money and probably not touch it in our area. So I really want to focus on us staying in our lane and also kind of looking at this in the context of the crisis at hand in terms of our city budget. I like what Counselor Nordike had to say in the beginning about shoring up positions that might be at risk that are compatible with this settlement, and also some of the work where we're not able to do all of the work that we need to do currently. We know we need more outreach. We know we need to get into Wallace Marine Park more. We know we need to get into Salem more. And I would like to, I mean, there are so many things that we could be working on with this money. I feel like we should really just be kind of more focused on what, the things that are our mission and let, you know, the county, each of the counties has settlement money. There's Measure 110 money. There's also insurance reimbursement for treatment and things that they're all eligible for that we're not eligible for because we don't do that work. So in my mind, it seems like, because it's not a huge amount of money that we're talking about, it feels like we should just kind of refocus on the things that are within our purview that we're having difficulties delivering on currently. That's just, that's just my way of thinking about it. Counselor Stapleton.
Thank you. My personality is I tend to like, well, he's nodding his head.
I'm familiar.
Yeah, we know each other well. I tend to just, you know, take a giant bite, so I appreciate that, and I would agree with that statement as well. I just want to ensure that the city of Salem is a strong advocate for these different approaches with our county partners. I fully understand that they have their own money and they should be leading the charge on a lot of these things. I just want to make sure that we have a strong voice at the table and advocate for the different demographics in our community that need support and voices at the table. That's, that's what I want.
Counselor Nordike.
Thank you so much. Really appreciate the conversation. A couple of points that I want to make that I feel I really should. I really want to congratulate our Attorney General and the Oregon Department of Justice for all the work they did in securing these funds for their entire state. I don't know if we've said thank you yet, and this is an extraordinary achievement, and I really think it is worth acknowledging. So I really want to, you know, give kudos to my former colleagues at DOJ. I had nothing to do with this settlement when I was a DOJ attorney, but I really just want to commend all of the secretaries, the paralegals, the investigators, the attorneys, everyone who served under Ellen Rosenblum, who helped make this possible, with all the other offices of Attorney General around the country. This is truly an extraordinary accomplishment, and I hope it'll provide a small dose of justice for families who have been irreparably harmed by opioids. But let me set that aside. I also appreciate Counselor Stapleton's comments about, are we coordinating with the county? Are we coordinating with other entities? I absolutely think we should. And I just did a little quick math. I was looking at the Marion County data that is in our packet, and they indicated that they had 867 visits to urgent care or emergency departments for opioid overdoses, overdoses, 867. And they had it broken down by various communities within Marion County. And when I started adding up Central Salem, for starters, which has a whopping 274 visits out of that 867, I started thinking, gosh, I wonder, what is, what is Salem's share of these ER and urgent care visits? And my math, when you add up, and again, I recommend everyone take a look at the packet, it's available online, when you add up 274 from Central, 102 from South, 99 from Northeast, another 63 from the Sunnyside portion of South Salem, and 45 more visits from Southeast Salem, that's 583 visits out of 867, or roughly 67% of all of those visits within Marion County happened within Salem. So I really hope that we continue conversations with the county and that they, I understand that they see what I'm seeing here, that the majority of these opioid visits are happening right here in Salem. And I really feel it's important to triage, so I look forward to our conversations there. The only other thing, I also appreciate the fact, and thank you staff for pointing out the fact that certain populations are absolutely disproportionately impacted. The staff report shows that Black and Indigenous persons are hurting the most. There's also a specific age group, if you look at that also. So it's absolutely fascinating and devastating all the same time. But I'll only repeat myself once. If we can avoid layoffs through clever usage of these funds within the permissible purposes and uses for these funds, then I think we should. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? Counselor Nishioke.
Thank you, Mayor Hoy. I will agree with pretty much all of the conversation that's already been had, and I recognize that the amount of money, the 500,000, the 2 million we have plus the approximate 500 each year really is great, but can't do everything that we want. And so I too would like to see the impact in the sense of trying to save positions or provide the reversal medication as, to not only police but fire, because they're out on a lot of those calls too, so ensuring that the rescue people would be able to have that. And I don't know, again, I think it was discussed, what schools have available or other places that might need this in an emergency. Those would be the areas I'd like to focus on. And then to support police or fire or even individuals that have to manage their staff that are overworked or feeling very themselves depressed with all of the work that they have to do. I would just want to ensure that we can keep, keep those people well-cared-for and that we provide the funds in something that is more directly saving those lives. Education is great, and we should be doing that, and I would advocate for it, but I would really like to see that the money is spent where we can see the dramatic effects. A lot of times, education, we don't see the, the results of it, which is unfortunate, but it is a priority. That's about all. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? Counselor Phillips.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to my colleagues and staff for this, tonight's work session. I think, you know, I'm hearing a lot of consensus about our understandable desire to, you know, preserve the workforce that we already have and to avoid cuts, given the, you know, the financial difficulties that we're in with the structural imbalance and not having enough funds to continue services as we've known them in the past. You know, that makes sense, and I, I am there nearly at the same level of intensity as I'm hearing from my colleagues. The, the place where I think I may differ a little is just in how effective it is getting naloxone to where it is needed. So that's where I, I think we may be in lockstep there, but it's just, if there's a way that there's an unmet need that's not achieved through the county's public health systems, you know, that's, that's something I'm trying to emphasize tonight. Beyond that, I agree with my colleagues. I think that we have to work with Marion and Polk County. We have to be collaborative, and I think we really, if at all possible, should try to work with the, the school district. I'm reminded by my colleagues that we got a presentation from Marion County that this, this is affecting, you know, people in our community that are far younger than we want it to be affecting. I, I think that there's some risk in terms of like maybe making people upset if we start talking about it or trying to educate kids, but not educating kids is killing people. And I know as a well-trained board-certified emergency room doctor, like, I still have a lot to learn. And if I feel that way, I know it's true for parents and for kids in this community. You know, there's, at the risk of maybe, you know, interjecting information that's a few months out of date, like, there are these little blue pills out there and you don't know where they're from. You know, if that's fentanyl, like, you have no idea how much is in it or what's in it, and they are so dangerous. So just, you know, be careful. They can be, kind of look like some of the prescription medicines out there because it's not that hard to like press them. And just getting presentations out there to the community as much as possible to start this conversation, because it will take arming everybody with some amount of knowledge and the tools to combat it to make a difference. Finally, I, I want to make sure, and I presume, and I get the sense from staff that they're being really thorough in their presentation, but, you know, we're just, we're just one significant capital city in this country, and I want to get a sense that we're looking at others who may have already pioneered some, some strategies so that we can learn from, you know, other people that are already tackling this to see what's, what's most effective. So, and then this might be a total tangent, I apologize to the mayor, a couple of things that might be off topic, but I mean, you know, as a doctor, I find it so frustrating when municipalities don't just talk about the elephant in the room. You know, fentanyl is a Schedule II drug. So, you know, medicines are ranked in terms of like their, their potential for addictiveness and the dangerousness of use. Schedule I drugs are, they have no medical purpose, they're the most dangerous theoretically. And, you know, fentanyl is a medicine that I use for pain appropriately when needed, and it's a Schedule II drug. Cocaine is a Schedule II drug. It can be used as a topical anesthetic. But marijuana is still a Schedule I drug, and that's ridiculous.
So dumb.
No person that I'm aware of with any amount of healthcare background feels that that's appropriate. And I just think it's important to, you know, say in this limited position that I have as a counselor how ridiculous it is and to call it out, it needs to be completely rescheduled or no longer scheduled. We lose our credibility when we don't say things like that, because there's no way, marijuana's not harmless, and we are utterly forbidden from knowing about it scientifically because it's still a Schedule I drug. I'm flying blind as a doctor, but to say that it's a Schedule I and fentanyl's a Schedule II is absurd. So I would just, in whatever capacity we have to speak and use our platforms, to call that out and, you know, demand that every administration moving forward try to fix that at the federal level, because that's what's needed. It has to change at the federal level.
Thank you, Counselor. That is one of the most vexing situations in my entire career. I never understood. You, because you can, when marijuana was still illegal in Oregon, you, there was a higher penalty because it was a Schedule I drug than a Schedule II, and things that are far more dangerous. It never made any sense. I want to go back to the naloxone conversation for just a minute. I want to understand from our deputy chief and our, for our deputy fire chief and our chief of police, where, what's the current status? I mean, I've, I've been out of the business for five years, but back then, we, we distributed naloxone to every staff member, no matter what their role was in my, during my career. So, I mean, and that's, I think that we do the same already. So I'm wondering what, I'm not sure what problem we're trying to solve. Is it just to maybe shore up our budget in terms of our naloxone supply? Because I don't want people to get the impression that we don't already distribute that to staff.
Thank you for the question, Mayor. Deputy Chief Brian Carrer, Salem Fire. We do currently provide Narcan to police and fire. So police just ordered 250 more double doses of the nasal Narcan versus injectables, which is much easier to give.
Yes.
And it's, it's very inexpensive compared to what it was a few years ago. So on top of that, we, every one of our engines and ALS rigs are all provided, but we use, we don't use injectable through the nose. We have devices that we, we give it, we can get it through the nose or injectable. So, but everyone provided, and on top of that, we carry four to five times the na- So, but everyone provided, and on top of that, we carry four to five times the normal dosages just because of the question that they had, because you're right, some people who get it on their hands, it's ingested through their skin, and you need four, five, sometimes six times the amount of dose of actual Narcan than you do need on just a normal overdose. So yeah, and we carry it on every single one of our rigs, and we don't have a problem getting it.
Thank you. And just for clarification, Narcan is the brand name for naloxone?
That is correct.
It's all the same. It's fine, I just want to make sure people listening understand it's all the same thing.
Yes, sir.
So. And Chief, what about, can you just clarify for the public, people who are listening, do we already supply that to our police officers?
Yeah, thank you, Mary Trevor. Womack, Chief of Police, ditto. We have it, all officers have it, use it regularly. It's cheap. Matter of fact, I think we get funding to support that too, so it may be free. So it's not, it's not an issue for us as far as supply and distribution, we do that.
Thank you. I just, that's really an important clarification, I didn't want to get too locked in on the, because I knew that we had done that a number of years ago, and I thought it was still in place, but I wanted to clarify. I got Nishioke and then Phillips.
Thank you, Mayor Hoi. So I appreciate that. I was not sure what the cost was and how, if the emergency services needed additional, and it sounds like that's being managed and it's not pressing us funding-wise.
Deputy Chief Brian Carrer, no ma'am, it's not. And we've actually been reimbursed, I think through the funds that were provided here, both police and fire. So now, and I mean, we, and we use it a lot. Last year alone, we used Narcan 589 times. That's double what we used in 2022, and it's just continuing to go up. So, and we use it on a regular basis, and it works very, very well when it's, when it's an opioid overdose, so.
Thank you. Counselor, did you have another one?
I just wanted to follow up. So then that would, again, make my point to be wanting to save the positions of the people that are providing that care.
Counselor Phillips.
Thank you, Mayor Hoi, for clarifying that. I think it's an important point to make, and I just want to state, you know, as an emergency room doctor, it's been my experience, you guys are well-staffed and you guys are saving lives. I mean, if you've administered over 500 doses, you've probably saved close to 500 lives. And I've seen it firsthand, you know, when people come to our emergency room. So when I mention a desire for potentially getting more naloxone, I'm already counting on that, maintaining that. And I'm talking about getting it into, you know, potentially like our housing or microshelter, you know, entities that we support or help coordinate and distribute it more widely in our community, in places where there may be gaps. So when I talk about, you know, more naloxone, just knowing how effective it is as a reversal agent, it's to go above and beyond what we're already doing. But 100%, I asked the question two years ago, and like that next month, I just, I've seen so much that you guys were so effective in using it, saving lives.
Thank you. Nicole Utes has a comment on that. Nope, you turned your mic off. There you go.
Thank you, Nicole Utes, Housing Administrator for Salem Housing Authority. I want to just express, we absolutely agree with you. We're trying unique methods to getting that into the hands of our, especially our permanent supportive housing clients and bringing those into the building. We're running into a gap in where some of this funding can be very particularly helpful for the housing authority is, we have a separate workers' comp, we have a separate insurer for the housing authority, and trying to get through policies and procedures on how our staff can be properly trained and administer this and cover all of the liabilities required to make that happen for the housing authority. So that is where some of that funding could be very useful in resident engagement for the housing authority to ensure that we can do that. Also recognizing that, we appreciate that the housing authority is listed alongside the first responders. We do go through compassion fatigue on a regular basis. Wellness is a huge part of the housing authority. We've made significant strides and changes in trying to come up with peer support teams to help our staff make changes within our office. But with everything going on in the world and all of the demands on the housing authority these days, we are still trying to find every creative way for wellness programs and to help make sure their health and wellbeing. So we don't have burnout, so that those great employees that do amazing work out there can continue to do that amazing work every single day. So we do appreciate that very much. To answer your other question, we were very fortunate to travel to Georgia last week. The special programs outreach team were actual speakers at the Georgia Housing First National Conference. We are so grateful to be in the city of Salem and have the collaborative team effort of our fire, police, compliance, be able to speak about it. People were floored about the collaboration that happens in this community, and we would just like to continue. We went to several of the classes on opioid settlement money. We're trying to find all of the best practices out there and help bring that here into our own housing authority in ways to improve, such as permanent supportive housing programs that ensure that residents are engaged, have activities, have a recovery incentive programs. Every way that we can find that there's already a great plan out there, we're going to try to make that happen for our own. Unfortunately, we're just not funded at those levels, and we're back there in Washington DC trying to advocate for that correct funding level to make sure that this happens as well. So we do appreciate being included in this process.
Thank you, Ms. Utes. Counselor Stapleton.
Yes, on this topic, do, are there other staff members that need to be considered? I'm thinking about park staff, I know that they have regular interactions with folks. The SOS team on the public work side, even compliance that you just talked about as well. I wonder if that's something that staff could consider to think a little bit above and beyond, and then, and I'm not saying that all of those should be, just maybe there is something there. And then I also just wanted to call out something else, and I know that sometimes the Salem City Council has a different philosophy on some of these social issues than our county partners. And I think that it would be really great to hear from them what they are wanting to tackle in this and what, how they want to spend their money, and then see how we can partner with that and fill in the gaps where maybe the Salem City Council has a little bit different philosophy on the approach, you know, trying to maximize our funds on both sides, if that makes any sense.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? Counselor Barney.
Thank you very much. I had a couple of questions and some comments, I guess. First of all, with the Narcan that's being provided, so I see there were 7, 7,500 in funds paid, is that what that was for? So what you're saying is it's not self-supporting outside of these monies, or was this just an addition? I was just curious.
It wasn't last year, but it, that's a changing environment right now as we see what we might be eligible for from the state.
Okay, okay, that helps. Quick question about the Walmart money, was that a one-time settlement or is that going to be an annual thing?
Yeah, I appreciate the question. I don't know. So I spent quite a while digging into all the settlement agreements, looking at all the payment schedules. Walmart wasn't as available as the other ones. Even the allocation amount is a little challenging to nail down exactly, so I'm not sure at this point. So Walmart, and then there's one other settlement that I mentioned in the lower paragraph, where I just don't have that visibility yet.
Okay, thank you. And I agree with my colleagues, the conversations to, you know, we need to retain the positions which are eligible for this kind of funding that we need to, need to continue. I agree with that. Another thing, we need to, I mean, to not stay in our lane, but I'm curious, the state will be getting, is getting funds, county, cities, I mean, how will these lanes be coordinated? Because it doesn't make sense to duplicate efforts. We need a coordinated approach, and that's, has been mentioned, obviously, but I think that's really important.
Thank you, Counselor. I think our city manager has a comment.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to come back to Nicole, and one of the things that we've talked about is funding an outreach team that would be specifically directed at Wallace Marine Park and dealing with the opioid use issues that we know are prevalent there. I would love to hear you talk about, you know, what your thoughts are for that team and how you might deploy that in.
Sure. So we have had initial conversations on that. Obviously, our special programs outreach team is very important to our agency, but a lot of what we do, we can't also do without our HST team from the police department. That's a two-person team that works Monday through Thursday. We lose traction on Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and then we have to pick it back up on Monday through Thursday. If there was any capacity to make this a seven-day operation, we would have that continued cohesiveness all week long instead of having a break there on the three, as well as having two officers that are specialized. They're amazing. We probably couldn't do the work that we do as well as we do it without that team. We're in constant communication and collaboration. Obviously, we work with all the other departments really well, but I can tell you that Officer Ramirez and Officer Bennett, they are very much integral into our, even our properties on a day-to-day basis. They show up, they smile, they had this great relationship all through the time, all the way through placement, and they continue to show up after the placement. And that's the response that we want to see, and it's a national best practice that is really working to help people gain that trust and that momentum and that coordination. We're a coordinator, they're amazing navigators of the system, and it takes a lot of collaboration of grant funding, housing dollars, housing vouchers, officers' assistance, because there's, my team's safety is paramount. And so if we're talking about adding to our special programs team, we would also hope that that extends into our housing services team as well, just to put that out there.
Thank you. Further discussion? Counselor Phillips.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to my colleagues and staff. I guess this is, at the risk of being redundant or just being overly didactic, currently, Mayor, you've initiated the Community Violence Reduction Task Force that's collaborative between, you know, not just our city council, but the county governments, sheriff's department, and, you know, the stakeholders, including the school board or the school districts. And towards that end, I guess my question is, is that something that could be beneficial for this topic? And would funds be necessary to kick something like that off to encourage the other, you know, municipalities in this region to come together to try and tackle this in a coordinated way? So I've heard, you know, I brought it up and we've all brought it up, the need for collaboration, not, this is not just a city of Salem problem, but it affects, you know, multiple levels of government and municipalities along the way. So that's just like, the question is, is something like where we do that, that, I forget the term, but that where we meet together collaboratively, like we have done with the violence reduction? That's my question.
Thank you, Counselor. Who wants to give that one a shot? Chief Womack? I saw you not making eye contact, I meant that I think you wanted to say something, but I'm not sure. City manager's going to give it a shot.
I'll be happy to. Obviously, we've already started those efforts of intergovernmental coordination. We've had contact with our peers in Kaiser. They received a much smaller amount of money, but they are interested in how is the city deploying those dollars? We've had conversations with our friends from Marion County, not Polk County as of yet, at least I haven't, Gretchen has. So we've started those conversations, and I think you're absolutely right, that's how we're going to have the most effect here is by being coordinated. And then we need to move upstream even one step further, and that's what are our friends at the state doing and how can we further coordinate with them? So we understand that and are working in that direction. And one of the reasons why we decided to start at Wallace Marine Park is we recognize that nobody is going to come solve that problem for us. So let's start with the problem that we have in front of us, with the resources that we have right now and that we know are going to be problematic going forward. Let's start there and then work forward from there.
Thank you. I guess my thought about, I'm a little hesitant to just be very geographic-specific. I totally get the focus could be there, but I wouldn't want to restrict that team from working elsewhere, just to be really clear on that.
I think it's a proof of concept and demonstrating that we have the capacity to work in this space well, and that we have the capacity to move people from, from living unsheltered into shelter and developing a system and program that we can use and transfer to other parts of the city.
Further discussion?
I just thought I would add as well that we do have a bilingual case manager on for this exact purpose for additional reaching out. That individual team member is also part of the regional solution that we have through our COC and Homeless Alliance, that that team can go out to both Marion and Polk County, they're not restricted to just Salem. And so we utilize those efforts in trying to get individuals back to the community that they want to be a part of. We may locate them in the Salem vicinity, they may have a better housing option in Woodburn closer to family and support systems, and we do try to make those efforts. We also try to work with both of our regional housing authorities to try to come up with solutions as well.
Thank you. Is there further discussion? Gretchen, I want to do a check-in with you to make sure that you have heard what you were hopeful to hear.
Yes, thank you so much. I think I've got good notes and all assimilated and come back with some thoughts.
Okay, I see another hand. Counselor Stapleton.
Thank you. I just, if I didn't say this, then I'd beat myself up. Scott, I'm going to put you on the hot seat here. Is there any way, if we still do the Salem Reads program this next year, I don't know if we have funding for that or where we get the funding for that, but if we do, could we do a book that is about this struggle? Whether it's, you know, American Cartel, which tells the whole story about how we're even getting these monies in the first place, or, you know, a fictional novel about, you know, somebody struggling with addiction, like could we bring the community in that way?
Seems like a good idea. I would, I guess we would need to look into the use of the funds and just kind of answering that off the cuff.
Yeah.
Seems like a good way to look at that, but I would want to do a little more research. So I will, I will do so.
Yeah, I'd love to, you know, when we're talking about creative ways that all of us can kind of get on board to address the issue, educating the general public in this way would be, I think, a fascinating thing to do in our community.
Thanks, Counselor. Counselor Gwynne, and then we'll go to Phillips.
I just wanted to say that I saw that Josh Lehr is here from Ideal Options and wondered if he had anything that he wanted to share as far as how he would like, like if some funds could be available for him, what they would do with that.
Okay. Josh, are you, do you have thoughts that you want to share with us tonight, or were you just here to listen? Come on up. Hit that button there for me, turn the green light on, please introduce yourself for the record.
My name's Josh Lehr, I'm the Director of Ideal Option, a medication-assisted treatment program. I supervise 100 MAT programs across the United States for Ideal Option. One of the things that I wanted to share in regards to the settlement money is two of the programs that you guys talked about, and one of them is with Chief Womack's team with Officer Ramirez and Bennett. I wouldn't be here today if it wasn't for Officer Bennett rescuing me in 2009, literally, helped put me in prison where I belonged for distributing narcotics in this community. But because of that, I got a fresh start in life. And so all these years later, being able to work with him and Ramirez, I did some checking, I collect data. Data is, like, we produce every year, our overall data for each state that we're in. And Officer Ramirez and Officer Bennett personally have referred 32 people themselves and 67 other clients at our Salem location have self-disclosed that the person that referred them there was Officer Bennett. If that doesn't speak volumes, that's almost 100 people by this two-man team.
Yep.
I'm waiting to find out the data from Salem Housing's team, because the work that they do is invaluable. If you guys want to spend money and spend it wisely, you have two representations of a need, of a possibility. I didn't know that your funding was going to go away for those two gentlemen, that would be where I would increase. I could sit here and give you data and reasons why to give my organization money all day long, but the smart money that's going to last and really be spent well in this community is sitting right here in this room. So thank you, guys. Thank you.
Thanks, Josh, I appreciate your perspective. Counselor Phillips.
So if you don't mind, you mentioned an acronym there, the MAT team.
Medication-assisted treatment.
Yeah, the acronym, you just said it, but could you kind of briefly explain to like the rest of the community what that is, or would that be more appropriate for staff? I was going to ask you because you brought it up.
Josh is an expert on it.
Yeah, yeah.
So MAT stands for medication-assisted treatment. So at our organization, we treat SUD substance use disorder with medication from our prescriber as a physician assistant, Ty... Ty Bradford. So we have a medical professional on staff that does the seeing of the individuals and prescribing medications. For our organization, we prescribe Suboxone, Subutex, Vivitrol, and Sublicade, and we will be starting Brixodet here within the next 30 days, which is, so Brixodet and Sublicade are two once-a-month injections to help fight the opioid epidemic, individuals using fentanyl and other opioid medications. But we also treat medication with medication, methamphetamine, stimulant use disorder, benzodiazepine use disorder, marijuana, kratom, just about you name it, we treat it. One of the things, too, for this group to know, is that we have the data that shows that if we can get people to show up to the first three appointments, 82% of those individuals are still actively engaged in treatment with us one year later. For law enforcement, this is a part that I love talking about, 97% of that 82% has not committed another drug-related crime. So treatment works. And the fight against opiates works, if we can get people engaged in treatment services. And again, you guys have two representations in this room of teams that are out there helping get people, not just my organization. I watch them, I've gone out with them, I have my team that goes out with them weekly, every Friday they're going out. They're referring to every organization. It's ultimately up to the individual where they're willing to go at that present point in time, and we get them there. Even my team, I don't care where they go, I'd like to see them at our organization. However, if we're not the right fit, we want to see people get help, and so that's what we do.
Thanks, Josh.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
And that was my, my next question was to talk a little bit about the MAT team. So it was serendipity that you guys were here and talked about it. It's mentioned in the documents as something that's happening in the state. So the MAT team, which the acronym's already been said, and I'm nervous, so I'm not going to remember it right now.
Medication-assisted treatment.
It's a thing that exists, that is funded, not through the city of Salem. I believe it's the state. And it can be very effective when people, you know, make their first, you know, two or three appointments. And it's an example that there really is hope. You know, as an emergency room doctor, we do get to refer people to, you know, various MAT teams. And not everybody, you know, accepts it on the first try, but that's where I mentioned the, you got to, you know, offer it to people 20, 30 times. And then when they go to two or three, you know, there are, you know, medications and things that can be done to, you know, help people break this vicious cycle. So my, my goal in mentioning it, you know, to talk one more time during tonight's session that we're almost done with, is just to encourage staff to, like, invite people in, like our guest tonight, and others from the state, to talk about those resources that our community might not know about. Because, you know, getting people, something like Suboxone or Methadone, and getting them access to Narcan, really can make a difference. I mean, this feels so hopeless, but we do have tools to make a difference, when you look at this from a healthcare perspective. So I just wanted to bring that up. I forgot to mention it earlier.
No problem. Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Hoy.
Thank you. Just one more thing. Chief Womack and I were at an event just last week or week before, and I turned to him and I said, if I could do one thing, it would be to duplicate the Bennett and Ramirez team. So let's see about that. I mean, I don't, I don't know how you do it. I don't know how you teach people to be like them, but I believe it's possible, and I think we should. So that would be one of my goals. I just wanted to say that publicly. Thank you.
Nicole.
Thank you. I was just going to respond to Counselor Phillips' comment. We are following a contingency management plan in the Plymouth House in Washington, and we're hoping that we can come up with a similar incentive program. As he said, if you can get them there three times, we can usually try to keep them in recovery, and hoping to work with a provider that can work with our permanent supportive housing and other programs, to, to look at a program such as that, where maybe they do come to physical our sites and continue that incentivizing, keeping that recovery plan going, is definitely one of our goals. There are definitely programs out there we can mirror off of, and we're looking into.
Thank you. Anything further? We're adjourned.